...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Peter. Our first order of business this evening is, it saddens my heart, but it saddens me too. It's a proclamation for Matt Chatfield, the former director of WIDA, and now moving on to the Empire State Development Corporation.
That's correct.
At this time, Matt, if you would... I've known Matt for quite a while. I know him like high school days, I do believe. And his wife was very good friends with my daughter. And his children and my grandkids have been together. We go back quite a ways. And during the 11 years that you've been serving on the WIDA, McCurry called WIDA, executive director, and the opportunity to work with during those years. And it's been a pleasure. During this time, Matt has brought about 15-plus million dollars to the Webster community through the grants and other things that he has done. Some of those that apply to the village specifically are accomplishments of the North Avenue Project, the Brownfield Opportunity Area, the New York Forward Grant, which is currently going on, four-and-a-half million dollars, which will appear regarding that in the spring. And coordination between Fair Life, between the Tessie Corporation, the town, Xerox, and the village. A lot of things are going on there. So Matt, I would like to read this proclamation that we would like to present to you. Whereas in August 2008, a coalition of community leaders held the first organization meeting of what would become the Webster Economic Development Alliance, or WIDA. And whereas this coalition, unique in the state, is comprised of the chief executives from the village, the town, the school district, the Business Improvement District, and the Chamber of Commerce. And whereas in early meetings, the coalition set forth and articulated a mission statement for the alliance, which was simply to speak with one voice for balanced economic revitalization and development in Webster. And whereas action strategies laid out in those early meetings included organizing a clear coordinated strategic approach to Webster economic development through comprehensive community input. And whereas additional action plans include, included a vision where the alliance would further identify and assist village revitalization, seek business recruitment and development in Phillips-Saltbasket Road areas, and identify state and federal programs available for funding revitalization and development initiatives. And whereas, some 11 years ago, Matt Chatfield, a local family man, took a leap of faith and agreed to serve this fledgling organization, which at the time was barely older than his eldest child. And whereas Matt, driven by his passion to serve the community in which he lives, utilized his skills and dedication, exceeding the expectations of the alliance. And whereas Matt, supported by a family which shares his passion for the community and guided by the direction provided by WIDA, secured over 15 million dollars in funding and led the way for countless improvements for and within the community. And whereas, in the words of Winston Churchill, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." Matt, through his efforts and giving, has truly made the village a place where life keeps getting better. And therefore, let it be known that we, Mayor Byers, on behalf of the entire Village Board of Trustees and the staff of the Village of Webster, most sincerely proclaim our appreciation to Matt and also to his supportive family, allowing him this opportunity and the community to benefit from his tireless efforts these past 11 years. And further, I urge all citizens to look to Matt as an example of exemplary public service and to be inspired to become involved for the betterment of our community. It goes to show that the work, what work of what one person can do is great. So in recognition, Matt, congratulations for your...
Speech. Oh, yeah, I keep a brief. Thank you, Mayor Byers. The past 11 years have been a privilege. Like the mayor said, I did take a leap of faith. Many aren't aware. I literally quit a full-time job with benefits and three kids under the age of six and took on a part-time job, you know, joining the alliance because I had, I had a vision for what I would accomplish and help my community. And in the past 11 years, you know, we did accomplish quite a bit working together. And I do want to thank the WIDA Board of Directors for their faith that they placed in me. I of course want to thank my wife. Without her tireless efforts supporting me, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish nearly as much as we have over these past 11 years. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it. And best of luck. The town and the village will remain in good hands, and the future is bright for Webster.
Thank you.
Damn.
Do you mind if we get a picture?
You direct it. Where would you like to... I can't get this. Anyone? Sure. You're not gonna get a job picture on that?
No. Just kidding.
I love it. Sorry, Peter.
Can you bring the car?
Huh? I'm going to move it to your right. It's all right. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Next, I believe that we have a proclamation. Peter Alba from the Historic Preservation Committee would like to present to us some information here and to go over about creating historic districts in the village.
I have some copies. These are the hard copies that I emailed you earlier. You did? Well, then you don't, you don't leave them. These are, you want afterwards? There you go. That's all right. I wanted to make sure. All right, well, thank you for having me tonight. I wanted to just come to you. We've been talking at Historic Preservation the last two or three months about the possible establishment of an historic district in the village. I know this can sound scary to some people, so that's why we wanted to go over it tonight and talk to you about it. There's actually a number of steps involved. And the first one, I just want to point out to you, is really very innocuous. And that's an historic survey of properties. It is actually, on the front page that I sent to you under actions, it talks about assessed eligibility. And that's really what this begins to do, is assess, assess the eligibility by having an historic property survey in the village. And we had some great discussions with Megan Clem about this. She did not want to go on record in the document, but gave us the indication that, based on our housing stock, we certainly do probably, you know, meet the criteria for having this kind of historic survey. But obviously, that would be the first step in the process. I guess, just to kind of go forward, you guys can all read this. I don't have to have to read it to you. But I would go through, like, just look at number five on the second page, where it talks about prose and myths. There's a few things that are really important to point out about the establishment of historic districts. The first is that it does assist in historically preserving our heritage here in the village. We do have a lot of significantly older homes and housing stock. There's also some economic benefits because it does have an effect on property values and also promotes tourism. And to give you an idea of this, many of you know I'm a member of the trustee, chair of the trustees, actually, of the Webster Baptist Church. That is an extraordinarily old structure. And we will get probably once every year requests for people to come in and actually tour the church based on its cobblestone design. So you can see the, what happens is, these people are coming here, they spend a couple hours, and invariably, what do they do? They go and eat somewhere. So they might go to the cobblestone, or they might go to, you know, any, well, berries they used to go to, but they might go to, they're very wheeze now. So there's, there's kind of this cross-fertilization that occurs with historic structures as well. But the biggest thing to keep in mind is the tax incentives that can be, that can have for property owners within the district. They get a 20% tax incentive when they do improvements. And those improvements are very broad. They can go from exterior changes to a home improvement to even interior changes like kitchens. So that is a huge part of what the benefit is. It also gives you better access to grant opportunities because you become a certified community, and so those grant opportunities are greater, the chances of getting them awarded is greater. There are some myths that I'd like to dispel really quickly about historic districts. The first is, are there any regulatory restrictions that are added on to the property owner? The answer is no. The only regulatory restriction is the zoning that's there now. It doesn't add anything to it. It doesn't change local zoning. And will it cost more for someone to work on their home or business? Actually, no. It actually, it actually isn't something that, it doesn't affect that at all. And does it allow another layer of government to tell people what to do with their properties? And again, the answer is no. Perhaps 20 years ago, but there's significant differences when we talked about this then, and it does not work like that now. So again, it's just a designation of an area that has historic significance within a particular municipality. And the village is perfect for this because we do have a lot of old housing stock. And you can see the federal rehabilitation tax credit is 20% for rehabilitation of historic owner-occupied residential property. And New York State also adds a 20% tax credit for up to $50,000. So there is, there is a distinct benefit to property owners for being in an historic district. And I know a lot of you here, Daryl and I definitely know this. We live in historic homes. Judy had an historic home, Carl has one. They do take a little upkeep, right? I mean, so that's actually valuable. You know, it's, it's not uncommon for something really odd to occur because you're in a 150-year-old structure. So, and anyway, so that is, that's really, those first two pages really give you kind of an overview of what we're talking about here. Then the next set of documents is basically a draft document that goes through what the plan would look like if there was a proposal for a historic resource survey. And then kind of a draft timeline. We base this on, when we talked, we're in 2025 in September. I'm sorry, we base this on what we just talked, we're in 2024. So some of these dates are approximate, but there's certainly, there's certainly possible ways of looking at this. It's not a short process. It's going to take time to do this, to do the property survey, and then time for the public input, and then time again for public hearings and those kind of things as well. And actually, time to define the boundaries of the district. That is really the whole thing. I think what we'd be asking for the village board to do is give us a general blessing that we can move forward. As far as cost goes, the cost of the historic survey can be, can be very much offset by grants. The first most important grant is a 501(c), is because the, either because the village is a municipality, I would recommend the village apply for it rather than say, they have it here at the museum, could do it, but I think it really is a village project. It's a Preserve New York grant, and that covers 80% of the cost. If that wasn't good enough, you can close that gap further by applying for additional grants of 20%. There are some municipalities that pay nothing because the entire cost is paid for through grants for this historic survey. So I guess that is sort of the overview of it in a kind of a nutshell. It is a, I think it's an exciting opportunity for the village to get itself into a place where it can say it has a district that encompasses historic homes. Again, not to, not to in any way restrict homeowners in that district, but rather to highly see the homes in that district because those of us who do have historic homes, as anyone who doesn't, you know, but everyone does, but particularly ones of the historic homes, we look, we kind of have a great pride in that. They are a lot of work, but they're beautiful. And so this is a great way to help keep that up. And again, it brings in some opportunities for us to do tours, just talk more about what we have here in historic research in the village. Do many of you have any questions that I could help answer? If you think of any, just email me anytime.
I have one. Did we have a survey done or did we have something done a while ago that was designated historic homes or...?
There was a survey done. It was done in like the 1980s and 90s. It's quite old. And that survey was not actually an historic resource survey, believe it or not. It didn't cover all of the actual properties that were qualified under this kind of, under this kind of plan. So I'm not, I think it was done in a different way. It wasn't done with the notion that was going to be an historic district. It was done with the notion of just simply surveying individual homes. These types of surveys are more, at least according to Megan, are a lot more in-depth. They tend to look at a house differently. They tend to look at our perspective of style differently. So you're going to get a different and better result off of this than what you saw in that. Plus, it's 30 years later, so, and things have changed.
One of the things that you mentioned in here, my question is, if you're doing this in terms of property value, increases property value, that increase then, would that increase the tax, property tax on that home? And would that, you know, reassess the value?
I'm not saying, I can't say that wouldn't happen. I mean, I think if it adds value to your home, it could possibly add to how your home is taxed. But, but so, but it would, but of course, the one occurred before the other. First, you're going to receive the value, and then you're going to get a tax on it. So I would say that, can't guarantee that wouldn't happen. I mean, but obviously, it would, obviously, if it has an effect on the value, it's going to have a positive effect on the value. So, so you'll be able to sell your home for more. So the person coming in, they're the ones that will probably have to pay a little more tax rate, so.
I'm just wondering how this might dovetail with the town and their reassessment.
Well, if actually, if the town's reassessment schedule is, as I understand it, they would be, we would nowhere, we would not be able to implement this prior to the time that that reevaluation occurs. It would be hard to do. It takes time to do this.
The village, it'll be 2020 maybe?
Well, it might be around the same time then. So yeah, yeah. Talked in two years, I think, to get this done. It's not a horribly expensive product, so when you're thinking, if you're thinking like it's going to be a million dollars, it's not. She was talking in the couple tens of thousands, which is why it can be covered by grants, so.
Right, right. Who would be the lead in applying for the Preserve New York grant and any others?
Well, she indicated that we would be the leads initially in the application process, but the Landmark Society is, if we utilize them. They are, they are very welcoming in terms of helping us apply for it so that we have the best chance of success. So I guess the lead would end up being the Historic Preservation Commission in the initial, at least initially, in terms of the application. When the grants are awarded, it's going to be awarded to the village. So I don't think, I don't think the 501(c) could actually handle that particular responsibility. But that we would, but we certainly would, we certainly would lead the effort to get, to get, to get this going.
Matt, you want to help us with one more grant? How soon could a Megan start?
Well, I mean, I think it's a matter of whether or not the board is relatively in support of the start. And the other thing is, one thing doesn't necessarily lead to the other. Just because we get the historic property survey, if for some reason it short-circuits and doesn't go all the way to the historic district, we still have that survey to do an inventory of our homes in the village and our, and our businesses. So it does have value just in that alone, that we have a document that's current, updated, and much more complete than what we had before to work with. But I do think it would be good to have public, you know, forums and hearings to determine whether or not people are okay with this. Because it really is, it really is a good thing without having any penalty at all. They've really done a great job in not penalizing homeowners for having a historic home. Just the opposite, in fact, so.
I think in the documents, Megan suggested starting in the fall, on the assumption that the village is going to apply for the grant.
Right.
The grant would be due in the beginning of March or something like that. You must hear sometime over the summer whether you get it or not. If you just want to pay 18 grand upfront out of the village's own money, she'll probably start tomorrow.
Yeah. She only wants 20% down, and then 60% of the project completion she's asking for. It would buy us a little time.
It would.
You know what I mean? It's not like you have to give it, give it all to her now.
Right.
It's 20%, she has $3,700 down.
Exactly. And I think the village should apply for the grant. I think it's got, I think it has a lot to say for us to be able to get that grant approved. So I don't, I just, even if, even though, even if the village upfronted the 4,000, I still think the village should be looking at that grant opportunity because it really, that'll help us hone even more, I think, in terms of how we look at this whole process, so. So, well, I know, I know that you, I know you've heard some things probably here and there about this. And I said everything today. If you want to kind of let this narrate for a couple weeks, you can, you can let me come back, and I will get a sense of what you want, see if I can figure out a motion or a way for us to move forward with your blessing. We'll, we'll do that. I suspect at the moment, if you would let, if you would let us just kind of give us a sense that it's okay, and then let us, let us work on the grant, that's probably what we would start doing. But like, am I like, how about, I'll come back. This is the first meeting in January, and then we'll talk about it again and see where you're, where you're at, where you're at. Does that sound good?
Peter, will you help us write the grant?
Yes. Yeah, the three of us, there's probably three or four of us in that group that we can do this together to make this happen. So I think we can write the grant. I just, especially with the Landmark Society's input, I think that's definitely possible. It's not, this is not the most complex grant by any stretch.
Good.
It's not the New York State four grant, so. There you go. Okay? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you, Peter. Sorry, I forgot to tell you I did that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think the next meeting will be five. Yeah. Ask a few questions. One. Well, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Personally, I think that it may be good in terms of a district. I looked at your map and the area that was encompassed by it. I don't know exactly how it fits to it. The iron brick, half the house that no one else has. However, we'll see.
Yeah. Well, they go through and they, they look at all the architectural styles, and they describe them for us. And then they put them in context with other buildings as well. So like Matt's house is very unique. And there's only one other one that we know of in the entire community. So that's why, so those kind of, those kind of things become really prominent when they look at these, these particular studies and say, you know, what kind of, what kind of architecturally unique treasures do we have in our community, so.
Well, this is something to look over. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Come back January.
Okay, I'll be here.
Any other comments from the board?
I like it.
Then I would open the meeting up at this point for public comment. If yours is open, come to the podium, state your name, and address the board. If there is no one who would like to wish, who would like to address the board this evening, then I will close that part of the...
No, I'm just not teaching tonight. I just don't have a class there. I have to teach today.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
Well, then we'll move to the regular part of the meeting. First item is a resolution to approve minutes from the November 26th meeting. Looks like they were relatively good.
Yeah, number three looks right.
But I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
I like that motion.
One second. Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkane and Trustee Lancy? Okay. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers? Motion passes.
All right, next we have our claims and warrants. If anybody has a question? What about the communit?
I can look through that. I'm okay with that.
Looks like quite a bit is being paid out to the sewer. Jake, that notice about the crane hanging, money being held until there is a, oh, final decision reached on, was it 67, 70,000? Something like that.
It was, and it was paid on my offering. I can't recall exactly. That was for the new...
Chemical.
The storage building there.
For chemical.
Yeah, with the changes that had to be made because when they were excavating, they discovered an existing foundation that they removed and there was some additional costs. I think that's what was related to that, the redesign of that.
Yeah.
Work in some of the redesign stuff when we moved the chains outside, or, and...
It looks like there was a rejection, actually. I thought it was 74 initially. I think that had a factor, and then it went down.
I know there's some trade-offs, certain aspects.
Some trade-offs, too. Okay. Anybody else have any questions on it? No? Coming? Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkane?
Aye.
Trustee Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Next, we have a resolution to set a public hearing regarding the dedication of a portion of Cedar Way Circle for January 9, 2025 at 7:05 p.m. Resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to set a public hearing concerning the proposed dedication of a portion of Cedar Way Circle to the Village of Webster. That a public hearing on said proposed dedication of a portion of Cedarwood Circle[1682.82] hearing on said proposed dedication of a portion of Cedarwood Circle shall be held on the ninth day of January 2025 at 7:05 here at the Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, Webster, New York. That notice of the time and place of such hearing shall be published once audited for the fourth day of January 2025 in the Webster Herald Newspaper of General Circulation, dead Village of Webster. So I think we need a reservation put to a vote. Is that correct?
Yes, to set.
So at this time, I would ask for a motion to be made on setting the public hearing for November, excuse me, for January 9th at 7:05.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Alito?
Aye.
Trusty Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So how is this going to show up in the Webster Herald on Thursday?
How?
For, um, because it's got to get published.
Yeah.
The second, if you're going to hold it on the night.
We know people, Don.
What?
We know people.
Yeah, okay.
I can get it in tomorrow. So it'll be for the first day, will that be okay?
Okay. I don't know what their deadline is.
It's tomorrow by five.
Okay.
Oh, whoa.
All right.
Okay.
Well, with the holiday and stuff, you know, with, we're not working.
I'll, I'll send it first thing tomorrow, though, just in case they're a little early tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll call that down. Remind you.
I would also ask.
Thank you, Don.
Heather?
Yes.
That you change the boiler stamp that you use and, no, this is Don?
Nope.
What?
Look up at the top.
I don't read those.
There's a mayor, you know, spelling of D-A-R-R-E-L-L. And if you have a boiler plate, change the bottom.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, Daryl.
It's been a month here.
I can't find it.
It's not the resolution that gets published, so you don't.
That's true. That's true.
But he, he does notice that it keeps popping up every once in a while from a copy paste situation.
I, I apologize if it caused you any embarrassment.
Oh, there's no doubt, and I have seen my name spelled about six, seven different ways.
You have something against the Daryl's, spelled D-A-R-Y-L, Daryl. D-A-R-R-E-L-L, Daryl.
So.
Welcome to the, welcome to your parents'.
Yes, for being the first.
Move to four.
His brother Daryl spells it.
That's my other brother.
His other brother.
Uh, next we have a resolution to approve the LOC release number six in the amount of $52,800 from the letter of credit for Greenbrier Crossing Phase Two for the request dated 12/17/2024, and authorize the village clerk to sign a letter to Five Star Bank to facilitate the release of these plans.
Oops. I didn't put the letter in there. I didn't write it yet.
See, in front of you, the itemization, the release number six.
It really, it's 52 ages, 11 light poles that was removed from letter credit release number five because they weren't energized, or actually, there was only 10 of them, and we counted, and they weren't energized yet. There should be any energized this week, but it's certainly not. They put in the part that they had the letter credit for and put in the poles, just perspicacity. We took it out of the last one. So it's, all the poles are there now, and our G D is just very slow. But they're coming hopefully this week. I was going to say so this Christmas, but it hasn't happened, so it's a while.
Well, and the motion to approve?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trusty Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Alito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, we've done the big part of the meeting. Don, if you have anything that you would like to report to the board regarding?
Not that comes back of mine.
Nothing. Then quiet.
Yes.
Much better, much better Sunday at the build game than a couple of weeks ago.
Depends, yeah. Depends who you like.
It was a very wet tailing.
All right. Well, clerk's office, what do you have to report for?
So per your request, we looked into another company for IT services, and this happened to fall into our laps, actually. Daryl, D-A-R-R-E-L-L, and I were at a meeting, and we were over at Maplewood. And I, after the meeting, I asked Greg, Jamri, what could they use? Because they have a really nice setup with like a little camera like in this, like in the wall. And I asked him if he would give me a recommendation, and they came over the very next day. And we were really impressed in terms of, they're right in the village, called At Your Service. So we are waiting for a proposal, and I'll send that to you when I get it. But we were very impressed, and I had Karen come in with me, and they really seemed to know what they were talking about. And they mostly, they only deal with municipalities. So I'll give you an update. Nice one.
Have we changed there a couple of times?
No, we've had LMT since I've been here.
And they don't deal with that many municipalities. They're changelors. They want to change all of our computers.
Oh, yeah.
Three that were talked about.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't trust Greg. But I, yeah, he had suggested because he's been so hopeful on a few things.
He highly recommended them. And, yeah. And actually, I didn't know if they did IT services. At first, I just asked him if they would help us install a camera so that we could really be, not like sleeping, but really high-tech for, if someone, so we'd be able to.
I checked the cabinet, the key needs to work.
Well.
They're insurance.
But, um, so when, if our mayor's out of town or whatever, we'd like to have a presentation, they could see everybody from up there, not just here. He's wonderful face. So, but then he said, we'll use for IT services. We got to talking, and I'm excited to hear what they have to offer. That's all.
Well, we welcome you. And we have a report from a holding.
Yeah, so we got 10 applications in November. I issued three certificates of occupancies, five certificate of appliances, and we had two applicants for zoning board. One was approved in Power Society, and one was tabled driveway on Martin Street.
How is this time of the year? Are any people coming in?
It seems to have, driving starts to slowing down a little. Last week was, I think the first week, right? Finally started.
Breathing.
Yeah. Digging down on my desk a little bit.
Yeah, I'm going to say it. He said, because he was.
Just chaos. I don't think you should ever take vacation again.
The, I guess I have a question. The dedication that we are taking on this portion of Cedar Way Circle, maybe this would apply to you. Jake, I see on here that there are one, two, three, four applications, are they? New build townhouses? Cedar Way, is that going to be plowing or taking dedication of those roads, which I assume then we would be plowing?
Yeah, so.
Those pre-existing homes or?
We have an easement with them now because they were village homes on the street starting last winter. Greenbrier Crossings, I guess if you look at it from the south with north up top, it's like a tennis racket with a horseshoe on top of it. So that's Autumn Leaf Trail is this one, and Cedar Way Circle is the, is a tennis racket, but it's kind of like one I use, so it's squished over a little. But it's, it's the straight part, basically, is what we're looking at now. And then the phase three and four is the, is the final part of the racket over here. So this, we already have the easement for, you know, for plowing that one. And it's just the streets, not once the dedication takes place. I'm going to do the sidewalks and that as well. Yeah. So, and it's, we.
The village, the village already took dedication of Autumn?
Autumn leaf, yeah. And actually, and with each one of those, a little portion of Cedar Way Circle, where you turn around for it. That was all phase one.
Thank you. And now, Jake, fill it up for.
Is my question to the board? Nothing.
He's expecting we're on vacation.
On vacation. Village. All right. Well, and I would mention that our next meeting, as you have already heard this evening, will be Thursday, January 9th, here at Doris Hall, and that will start at seven o'clock. And we will have a public hearing at 7:05. Anyone else? Anything for the?
Danielle's coming to talk about the financial statements. Tonight? Not tonight. She's on her way. We gotta wait.
Okay, really good. And I guess at this point, I would ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.
Happy New Year.
And happy New Year.